Mr. Mays. Ms. Poplar.
Present.
Mr. Nolan. Mr. Freeman. Mr. Davis. Mr. Neely.
Present.
Ms. Salloway.
Present.
Ms. Van Durin.
Present.
Mr. Kincaid.
Okay, I'd ask Councilman Neely to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please all rise? Thank you very much. Minutes of the previous meeting are en filed and council members have all had the opportunity to review them. Is there a motion on the minutes?
I'm moved to accept the minutes. Were any corrections, Mr. President?
It's been moved and is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any corrections or deletions at this time? Roll, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Salloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Durin?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes. Okay. Before I get started, we do have a special order this evening. There are a couple, two, maybe three council members that have to leave this evening, so I want to be sure and let the public know that they have previous commitments and they do have to leave early. And they'll be leaving depending upon what time their commitment is. We also have a special order for a presentation by the Chairman of the Blue Ribbon Committee, Mr. Wesley, and also Mayor Walling. And before I get started on this special order, there may be some interaction with council members. And before I get started, I want to make sure that you guys aren't opposed to some dialogue at the end of your presentation. Okay? They'll be brief. I'll make sure that council members have five minutes to respond to the special order and ask questions, and so that we can move on, because we've got a number of people here and it's pretty chilly here this evening. So with that-
Mr. President.
Mr. Mays?
Who got to leave early?
I don't-
Okay.
I have a memorial service.
Mr. Nolan has indicated that he has to leave early. Mr. Neely has to leave early. And I guess those are the only two.
I have a memorial service. Margie Bauer, a constituent in my ward, she passed away and the memorial service starts at 6:30, so I do need to be there.
So they will be leaving early. So at this time, Mr. Wesley, if you would like to come and give us your presentation, and then following your presentation, I'll allow the mayor, and then when he's completed, I will ask each council member to have up to five minutes to respond and to ask questions.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Members of council. My name is Bob Wesley, and I was the Chairman of the Blue Ribbon Committee. This committee was formed in January. It had 22 members. Nineteen of those members were City of Flint residents. Each and every ward was represented in this committee. This committee's function was to take a look at stresses and different governance models, and come up with recommendations that we will set forth that you have a copy of at this time. The committee dealt on a consensus, which is not a hand vote or a voice vote. It was a consensus that, you know, if you could live with it, then we'll go with it. Okay? Now, each of you have one of these reports, and you know, there's several things that I'd like to point out. This was more of a study group as opposed to some folks think the Blue Ribbon Committee was a charter commission, a transition commission. This was nothing more than a study group to look at different things that could keep, hopefully keep our city from going back into a financial crisis again. And in doing that, we looked at several items. Several things that we were dealing with and information that we looked at, like the Home Rule Act, the Model Cities for- We looked at the Home Rule Act of 279 of 1909, the Local Financial Stability and Crisis Act, Choices Act of 436 and of 212, National Council League on Model Cities Charters, and the Flint Charter of 1974. And it was a lot of reading, a lot of studying, a lot of dialogue. We started this in January, and we met every other week for about three hours. And all of these were volunteer individuals. No one was paid. All the folks that came in and spoke with us were volunteers. They were not paid. And so with that, I would just like to move on to our recommendations, which is in the back of this report.
It's on page, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Page 21.
21. That is correct. Those recommendations was to reduce the number of mayoral appointments, to remove the resolve of the Civil Service section, the resolve of the Ombudsman's section, the resolve of the City Department requirements, align specific City Department heads to align with current structure, reduce the number of mayoral appointments to the necessary for current operations, to amend the Budget section of the City Charter to include best practices provisions above that we just talked about. You know, we were talking about looking at a hybrid form of government, which would be a city managed form of government, which we feel is probably, in looking at other cities, we looked at 46 other cities who had this form of government, and we saw that it was 10 cent more efficient than those cities who did not have this form of government. So in looking at that, we said that we need to do something. We need some changes to be made in our form of government at this time for Flint going forward, and hopefully not find ourselves in another financial emergency manager crisis. We feel this is the best way to get ourselves from under this emergency manager financial crisis. You know, I guess it's, and I say it to myself, I didn't know if I was going to say this or not, but if we continue to do the same thing and expect different results, that's a rule for insanity. And Flint has a great future, and we hope and we suggest there are several things that you can do, this recommended here, as far as a charter revision and a charter amendment. Some of those things we can enact immediately. A charter revision, those things we were sending, they will go out for the vote of the public. Everything here is nothing more than recommendation. And the final results, it's about three stages left here of things that have to happen before any of this go into play. And one of those things is it will go to the people for a vote.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wesley.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, City Council members. I'll just add that I think you all know that I was a member of the committee. I worked with the committee with an open mind. I certainly have my own ideas about some things that I believe could improve our city governance. Many of you have heard those remarks that I've given, especially in our State of the City Addresses. We now have a set of recommendations here before us that I understand the emergency manager will be working with the City Attorney and the State Attorney General's Office so that they are on the ballot for November. So I'm hoping we can give some attention to these items. Reducing the number of mayoral appointees. Many of you have heard me comment on that before. I think we need a streamlined city administration that does not allow, whether it's myself or a future mayor, to go back to, you know, 21 appointed officials. That's too many for a city of our size. I'm thinking that we'd want five appointed department heads, police, fire, planning and development, public works, and finance and administration. That's consistent with our current organizational structure. You could add five executive staff appointments to that, so you continue to have the ability to staff a mayor's, city administrator's office with executive support and additional legal support or communication support. So I think that thinking is very much in line with where we are. People in the community have different ideas about the Civil Service and the Ombudsman's sections of the charter. It's my belief, given where we're at with our police and fire budgets, that those are offices that we should not have in our charter in terms of requiring that we expend resources on those offices. We may want to put in place ordinances that allow for those similar issues to be addressed, but to not have a charter requirement, where many of you know in the past, one or more of those individuals has actually taken the City of Flint government to court and has demanded certain budget levels, and judges have supported that because it wasn't the charter, and there were certain operations that needed to be fulfilled. I think we're at a point with our general fund and police and fire protection that we want the ability to put as much of those resources as possible into the police and fire departments. And these things are generally consistent with what we've heard from the community through the master planning process. It wasn't something that got a lot of detail in that planning process, but if you go to the first few chapters, you'll see that through the community input, we had five top priorities that came from the public. Public safety, economic development, infrastructure and roads, blight, and then city governance. So those five came up at every meeting we had on the master planning process. So I think it's appropriate that we now have these items before us. It's essential that the public has an opportunity to vote on these items. I cannot ever, in any forum, support changes to our governance being imposed on our community. I believe this is appropriate process for them to go before the people for a vote, and then to see which of these changes the public may support. I think these are good changes. I think they streamline our government. Now, when you read the full report, you'll see a lot of other content that a future charter commission could consider if, in fact, the public says yes to that charter revision question. Generally, I support that. I think there's a lot of good thinking in there about how you bring more alignment to our city governance structure. But you certainly can go line by line through that and say, I think I'd like to see this change here or that change there. Our committee had those discussions. As was explained, we didn't vote up or down on every one of these items. We worked to get to a point where we had a consensus document. The Charter Revision Commission, if in fact it gets established, would obviously have to work in a much different way. That body would be charged with drafting an actual charter, where every one of those line items was legally sufficient and consistent with the Home Rule Act. As the chairman said, this group acted more as a study group to examine a set of issues, to look at governance models in other cities, and to propose some thinking on how our governance could be reformed. So with that, I think Mr. Chairman and I are certainly open to comments and discussion. The report is available online at cityofflint.com, so I encourage folks who are interested to go in and take a look at the details and to, you know, begin to think about how you want to vote, you know, yes or no, on each of these items that may be on the November ballot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I'll entertain some questions from council members. Councilman Mays?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really agree with the openness and the transparency as it relates to this process and as it relates to this meeting that gives me five minutes to discuss the Constitution of the City of Flint. The Constitution of the City of Flint, I'm referring to the City Charter, dictates to me that five minutes is a ridiculous opportunity to discuss something of such a serious nature. So I would move that we set a special meeting up where we can have more than five minutes in a public forum, which is transparent for people in the City of Flint, to hear us dialogue with this Blue Ribbon Committee. So I so moved. Now, I'll continue after that motion for more than five minutes, but I would be really derelict in my duty to my constituency and to myself if I go along with this five-minute rule. I know that we can have special meetings, and the whole meeting can invite the public, and in a transparent way, we can do this thing right. So I move that we set a special meeting for more than a five-minute rule.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, and I'm gonna let council members vote, but just remember, under the emergency manager law, the emergency manager allows and calls for us to have council meetings. So with the motion that's been moved and supported, is there further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. The emergency manager is saying to the public and to us that he's transitioning out. He's saying to us that we should take on our own way of government. And if he's transitioning out, then just like I told y'all in Budget Process, when I said lower water rates and let him raise them back up. I'm getting sick and tired of hearing every time we put a motion on the floor, a caution about the emergency manager and what he can allow us to do. This is a public meeting. We've made the motion. He's transitioning out, so let him tell us and the public we can't meet on such an important matter. So, you know, my motion stands. We'll see what he do, and we hear your caution. I'll be voting in favor of this motion.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Yeah, just-
Councilman Neely?
Yeah, clarity on the motion, Mr. Councilman Mays. Is it for a special meeting outside of this one at a later date?
Yeah, I'm looking for a special meeting. If the motion passed, we can let the emergency manager, we can do it after this motion. But right now, I want to see where the council stands, because this five-minute rule to discuss such an important issue that they spent weeks and months on is ridiculous, and I've read the whole report. I've got a lot of questions, and I'm not going to be embarrassed in front of the public about a five-minute rule. Let's have a special meeting on it, and then Mr. Early himself, I would request that he be here. Mr. Wesley, no disrespect to you and the mayor, but I know this game, and I'm telling you, he didn't send y'all up here. I call it throwing the rock and hiding his hand. So, Mr. Neely, through, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Neely, this is a motion for a special meeting at another time. You know, we can have special meetings within 24 hours. We can set it next week. But you know, this is a serious matter when you're talking about changing and revising charters. And I can't do it in five minutes, Mr. Kincaid.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you for that, Mr. Mays.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Roll.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Van Durin?
Yes.
Ms. Salloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Durin?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. President, if I can continue with my five minutes in this part, then I would continue, and I'm not saying that we don't continue with the five minutes, but if that took up three of my minutes, so be it.
It took three of your minutes.
Okay, then give me two more. I'm ready to proceed.
Okay, you can proceed. Each council person is getting five minutes to address this special order.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wesley, I predicted that once this Blue Ribbon Committee made recommendations, stuff would move to the ballot box. I believe that, well, that's what's happening. He's drafting up, and I've read in the paper, and I'm telling you, you can't speak for Mr. Early, but I'm telling you, you seem to shake your head no, but I predict that it's language being drawn up for things to move to the November ballot. That's what I really believe. And I believe that when we do charter revisions and/or amendments under state law, that I didn't want to see appointed people from the Planning Commission, elected officials such as Nolan and the mayor, on a charter revision committee. So, you know, my position is the same, and we'll wait to see what happens. I know the difference between an amendment and/or a revision, but I would like for you to respond to this. I saw how the Blue Ribbon Committee sidestepped the City Council. If Councilman Mays was on a Blue Ribbon Committee, my main recommendation would be that the City Council should be full-time. I wouldn't care whether it's three, five, seven, or nine. But when the council got other jobs, the members, and don't meet, then, you know, we really cheating the public. The council drives city governance. Can you respond to me why the Blue Ribbon Committee sidestepped the aspect of the council and how to make that a better place? Y'all said we'll address that, or the people can address that later. The City, the Blue Ribbon Committee don't get it.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Can you respond to that?
Mr. Wesley, if you'd like to respond?
The question, as I understand it, Mr. Mays, is why we, the recommendation for the council being part-time?
No, the council is part-time. That's one of the biggest problems that the city got, because they don't put people under oath. They don't find qualified staff. They got other jobs. They only want to meet for two hours when they should meet for five hours. That's Councilman May's biggest criticism of why government ain't working. My question to you is, why, when I read this report, did the Blue Ribbon Committee not pick up on that, and rather than a manager form, deal with the council form? Because whether you vote six council members for a manager, or five for a city administrator, both of them got to be qualified, but the council, for year after year after year, have not done the appointment process right. They ain't here. They don't want to put people under oath. They're part-time, not full-time. I'm saying that would have been my number-one recommendation, whether it was three, five, or seven. And my question to you is, why did the Blue Ribbon Committee kind of sidestep that aspect of the recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Mr. Wesley?
I think the Blue Ribbon Committee did take into consideration, and that's one of the reasons the recommendations set forth in this report is as it is.
It's not in there. On page 21, it's not in there.
Eric, he's-
Okay, I'll wait till the special meeting. I knew I couldn't do it in five minutes. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mays. Ms. Poplar?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very, very concerned and disheartened. First of all, as I look at the committee members, when I look at the committee members, and I think and I see my constituents and other constituents in the City of Flint, it's a shame and it's a disgrace. The people that will be affected, they're not on this committee. Everybody on this committee can pay a water bill, can pay a light and gas. They can go wherever they want to, to shop. They can take their little vacations, and the majority of them live in a perfect, patty community. But you put them over people's lives that will be affected in the City of Flint. Shame on you. And I'm looking at some of you. I sit on a committee with you. Shame on you. A disgrace. Now, you know, and I know, let's keep it real. Everything in this report is to keep Grant Easton from being the city administrator and anything else in the City of Flint, Michigan. That's what this is about. That's what this is about. Then, representation. Love Brenda Clack to death, but Brenda getting three or four doggone checks. So who in the heck can she tell my constituents that came by loaf of bread half the time, how they should live, where they should live? Oh, no, this is really wrong. This is my opinion, and seems like opinion of a lot of people that live in the City of Flint. I live among my people.
Order.
And I see, I see what goes on in my ward. Okay, night and day. See, you, y'all go to your little perfect, patty communities, get in your little cute houses, and forget about the rest of us. But I don't, because that's not why I was elected. The next thing is to take wards away. Who gonna make the decision? Who gonna make the decision? We know what ward's gonna go. It's gonna be the north side of Flint, where you got all your land, so you can [inaudible] your city. That's what this is. I don't see no committee, none of this committee, blue ribbon, red ribbon. Why you didn't go across the street? Stop making some changes over there to coincide with the changes you want to make over here. This is wrong. And Mr. Early knows it's wrong. But he is loving the power and the money that he is getting, and one day it's gonna come back to kick him in his behind. Now, you guarantee, I guarantee you on that. So, no, I'm asking everybody in the City of Flint that can vote, blind, crippled, or crazy, go to the polls and vote no on whatever you thought you come up in here with. And if I didn't know you much better, I would thank you stopped by the marijuana hospital before you went to the meeting. My five minutes, I'm done.
Thank you.
I don't know what I'm-
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Council- All right, Mr. Wesley?
Yes.
Could you, could you just kind of go through and explain exactly what the hybrid form is? Because I know, they hear that, but want to explain it to the folks so they know exactly what this hybrid form is as opposed to just a regular city manager form of government, because that was one of the biggest concerns that a lot of people are having. So could you kind of just go through and explain exactly what a hybrid form would be and what it will entail?
The hybrid form of government is a council-manager form of government, where you have the mayor and the council sitting together. Mayor is the president of the council, and they, the council and the mayor hires a city administrator, and that city administrator reports to the council and the mayor at the same time, same information. The city manager deals with the hiring and firing of staff, department heads, and that sort of thing.
Okay, and what about how they're elected? Would the mayor be like a council member and have to run, or would he be running as a, you know, like a regular, the regular, um?
The mayor would run independent of the council.
So he'd be properly elected?
He would be properly elected, yes.
Okay.
And the council would be properly elected.
All right, thank you. Okay? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, just a, I guess, a couple of my thoughts, and then I do have a couple of questions, too. You know, since I was elected in 2009, or re-elected in 2009, I've said that our current charter does have some issues, that it does need to be tweaked. And I think some of those issues that I've talked about are included here on page 21. What I've also said is that, you know, our current situation that we're in, again, I don't think you can pinpoint anything specific in our current city charter that has led us to this, to this point. So I personally am not in favor of a charter commission. I think that a lot of Flint's problems have been is that we've elected bad people, and we've gotten bad results. And I think that if we elect quality people, that you're gonna get quality results, and that our current charter does provide a mechanism to address those non-quality people. And I think that you've seen that process successfully once against Mayor Stanley, he was recalled, and then it forced Don Williamson to resign, because he was gonna be recalled, too. So I don't, I don't think that we need to go all in and say that, you know, our charter needs to be totally rewritten. I think that there's some things that should be tweaked, and I think that you have addressed some of those here. I also think, well, I guess my question will be is, in this hybrid form of government, it does say, or the report said that the mayor would continue to be a full-time city employee. So in that process, if the, if the department heads are all accountable to a city manager, he's gonna do the hiring, firing, what did you envision as the role for the mayor to be then? If he was not accountable for those, for those department heads and their actions? And then, how did you justify that being a full-time employee?
He would have other administrative duties, I guess, going out, meeting the public, and dealing with those type of things.
Nothing, nothing specific.
And, and the, and the, I'm not sure what we outlined.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, we outlined several other things.
How did the committee, I mean, when we go to the polls and we elect a mayor, we're kind of, you know, the community is going to the polls and voting for a vision or some direction, that they agree with this person's vision or aspirations for the city, and then they can hold that person accountable as to whether or not they have moved the city in that direction. How do you envision that playing out in a city manager form of government, where, you know, individual wards can maybe hold their councilperson accountable? But how do you see the city holding somebody accountable for the direction or the movement of the city?
Well, the same thing with, you would deal with now. You know, if you recall, you can recall that mayor with two-thirds of the vote. I mean, whatever the voting percentage is for the recall of a, of a mayor.
But if the city manager, you're saying that the city manager's taking its direction, then, from?
The council and the mayor.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Again, I'm just, I'm not in favor of a, of a charter commission, but I can see where our current charter does need to be tweaked here and there, and I would want to see that process move forward first versus a wholesale charter revision. So, thank you. Okay.
Councilman Davis?
My concern in question is, coming down with a city management form of government, how does that resolve the biggest problem that we have? And the biggest problem that we have is we lost over 100,000 residents. How does that bring over 100,000 residents back? How does it generate income taxes, and how does it generate property taxes? That's the biggest goal. That's the biggest problem that we're suffering from. That city management form of government is just purely politics. That's all that is. That's the dis, to continue to monopolize this form of government, the emergency manager created a hostile environment with the residents against city council, and then in the end, he gonna try to put that on the ballot for people to vote out of their own emotions, having a disdain or dislike towards city council. That's all a strategy. And I tell people I wouldn't vote for that, because that's one, it doesn't speak about income taxes, and it doesn't speak about property taxes. It's just one good form of deception. That's all it is. And the sad thing about it, Mr. Wesley, and you are my constituent, but they put a black man at the top of the, of, 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 of the thing to, to, to sit there and make it seem as if that you have the idea. Mr. Wesley, this is only a big form of deception to make you take the fall in the end, when it all looks bad, it's gonna be pointed dead at you. That's all it is, brother. And I'm not telling you no lie. I mean, you might don't see it, you might don't see it, but I see it. Where I've been for many years of my life, I've seen the greatest deception. I've seen the most cunning, the most slick, the most artful, manipulative people that the world can never produce. So this is nothing but elementary to me, and I see, that's what they're doing. They put you, a man that look just like me, at the top of the front, and implement something that is gonna mess our city up, because it has nothing to do with taxes, it has nothing to do with anything that we're actually suffering from. We bring a city management form of government in tomorrow, it's, we think, 100,000 people gonna hit I-75, or I-69 coming back? They're not gonna do that. And I'm, and, 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 and to be honest with you, Mr. Wesley, I have nothing against you. I have nothing against you. I sympathize, though. I really do. I sympathize, because they could have picked anybody other that didn't look like me up there, and being the chief head of this city management or this Blue Ribbon Committee, when the Blue Ribbon Committee, for one, it violated the Open Meetings Act, because it didn't bring nobody in from the outside. That's a violation within itself. It is. It's a violation of the Open Meetings Act, because you did not allow the residents to be a big part of this. You gave three or four flimsy little meetings, not you personally, because I know it's not about you, it's about the emergency manager. And that's why he's not here. That's why he's not here. He know he's wrong. And I'm, I'm just saying this, you don't have to be on the defense, I'm just giving my own personal feelings. He's not here, and there's no reason why he's not here. But he's not here because he knows that this is wrong. See, when you're dealing with truth, you have no point but to stand in front of the light. Everybody want to be the shining star when it's truth, but when darkness come in, and manipulation, deception come in, you hide up under a rock. That's why he's not here. Every, he's been up here many a times at big meetings like this. He has. He's been here many a time at big meetings like this, and given his own explanation of why things should be the way, and how it should be ran, but today, on something that's really major. This is the most major thing in the world of Flint, Michigan. This is gonna change the whole dynamic of this government. And I tell people, I wouldn't vote for this for nothing in the world. Couldn't give me a million dollars to vote for this. I couldn't have my hands on this now. But I want to ask the question, though, before we get away from it. How does this resolve the income and property tax dilemma and the problem and plight that we have right now? How does it resolve that?
I think a city manager would assist us in the financial areas, in making sure that everything is being done properly, and navigate us through the minefields of our financial situation right now.
Okay, now I want to say one more thing, though, and I want to say, and I want an extra minute to say this. Since I've been on council, I, I need one minute, please, if I can get one minute, please, hurry. Since I've been on council, there has been institutions up and down Door Highway and everywhere else, but lately, I've been seeing that there has been black-owned businesses being discriminated against. How does this resolve this? You have a place on Door Highway called The Piece of the Rock, but you have deja vu in all the rest of these places up here, and they are not, they are not being harassed, they are not being messed over, but you have a black-owned business, which is a center, and the police, and the mayor, and everybody else that discriminating against them. And I'm gonna put a motion to the table, one quick time, real quick. I would like to know that have any of these businesses got Section 108 grant money, and has any of these businesses been harassed, like The Piece of the Rock, who is nothing but an entertainment system? That's all it is. And I'd like to put that on the record, and I'd like to get a copy of that. I'd like to get a copy of that, and I'd like each one of my colleagues to support me in that argument, because we need a copy of every institution in the city of Flint that's a rec center, or a titty bar, or whatever you want to call it. Where is the 108 section money, and how much are in default, are they in default? And I'm asking my colleagues to support me in this, because I'm sick and tired of watching The Piece of the Rock being treated as if it's a bad entity, when it's gonna bring property and income taxes to this city. And I would like to have my colleagues, Jackie Poplar, Shel Neely, Vicky Van Buren, Scott Kincaid, to give us a record of each and every businesses from downtown, to Door Highway, to Center Road, who got 108 section grant money, and who is in default, and how many of them has been harassed by the Department of Inspection.
Thank you.
I need my colleagues to support it.
Mr. President?
Just wait a minute.
No, he said, let's see what you finna say. Because he said a motion, and I need some clarification with what's going on.
Please, that's what I was gonna do, Mr. Mays.
I'm making a request for an investigation, so that we can get a motion for investigation on all of the companies that's downtown, on Door Highway, and Center Road, these titty bars, and all this other stuff that's out here. How many of them has been harassed by the inspection department? How many of them been got money from Section 108 grant money? And how many of them are held in default? And how many of them has been supported through the Flint Economic Corporation? And how much do they owe us? Because it's many businesses that owe us a lot of money, and they're not harassed, it's many of them that's not up to code, and they not have been harassed, but The Piece of the Rock is an entertainment, is, 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 is a center, it's an event center, and it's been harassed since it's been trying to come off the floor. And we need to know how many of them other businesses. Eric Mays, I'm putting a motion to the table for us to get copies of how many of them owe money from Section 108, and got money from Flint Community Development, and are in default.
Thank you. That's his motion.
Okay, so if he makes a motion, and we can clear it up in discussion, I'm gonna second his motion for the purpose of discussion, so we can see what's being said here. But Scott, now you know me, if you, I'll wait till discussion, I won't say, and I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm, you've got your motion, it's been moved and supported. We're gonna finish this discussion here, and then I'm gonna come back to your motion.
Okay.
So we gonna move the table, we'll move the table, that motion until a later day.
I'm just gonna hold it without tabling it.
Well, that's for table, man. You're tabling it for a minute.
Right, right now, we're gonna finish this.
So I'll move the table it until after the discussion on this, um, Blue Ribbon Committee.
I'll accept your motion to table.
Davis?
Mr., Mr. Neely?
Move the table it until after.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold it till the end, and then we're gonna deal with your motion, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
We can deal with it, Neil, I just want to deal with it today, so we can go on.
We're gonna deal with it as soon as we're done with this.
Okay.
Mr. Neely?
Yes, that's, can you pause this for 30 seconds, so we can get back to the focus of the Blue Ribbon Committee and their recommendations?
Yeah, thank you.
So we can focus on what that is. Mr. Wesley, I'm gonna ask you to step back to the microphone. I did review the report from the Blue Ribbon Committee, and I'm not in disagreement with all the recommendations that are made. Some of the things do need to be modified, but I am in disagreement with the way that the Blue Ribbon Committee was comprised by a recommendation from the emergency manager. I am in disagreement with the way that you guys handled the business in secret, and it is, was a violation of the Open Meetings Rule Act, as it relates to now, as it's matured to the point of coming before this council, and is being talked about being placed as a referendum before the voters. And we have been tricked by the emergency managers of past, and we have been tricked by the current emergency manager as it relates to these issues. We were tricked as emergency manager arrived. Many people didn't vote not to let them come in. We were tricked as it relates to the, the water rates and those things that were established. We were tricked to the way that the millage was placed on the ballot before the voters for public safety. So we have no trust in the emergency manager and the tricks that's being performed by them. Now, with the Blue Ribbon Committee, you guys had the meetings in secret, Mr. Wesley, and it was many, many people on that commission that did not reside inside the city of Flint. You, they, they said it was not a commission, a governmental body, or making governmental recommendations. You defined the group as a study group. I disagree with that, because these recommendations could find their way on the ballot before the voters of the city of Flint. In those meetings, it was required that the chief legal officer was there, which is our city attorney, which made it a governmental meeting.
It was not required, but he was there.
But he was there?
Yes.
Was he a part of the Blue Ribbon Committee?
He addressed questions that we put to him, yes.
Well, I don't think he was a part of the Blue Ribbon Committee, because the 23 members that was named there, his name did not appear on that list. Our chief record keeper, which is the city clerk, was at those meetings, which helped make it a governmental meeting, but the residents of the city of Flint, who would be impacted by these recommendations and/or changes, was not invited, was not there. There were several members from the downtown business development area that was at those meetings, but they named, did not appear as a Blue Ribbon Committee member. Their recommendations was heard at that meeting, but the residents were locked out. Now, I'm in a full agreement with my councilman colleague, Eric Mays, that we should have another meeting, but I have no confidence that the emergency manager will acquiesce to our, our request to have you come before us. So this may be our only opportunity, Mr. Wesley, to really have this dialogue about the injustice of what happened in those Blue Ribbon Committee member. Carl Bukowski was a member, and he was named. Did he resign?
No.
He did, he stayed fully throughout the process?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure, I heard that he had resigned, and I was hoping that it was not true that he had resigned from that process. But during this process, that it was closed to the, the members of the public, and as these recommendations come forth, this is not the first time the recommendations have been made. I think it was maybe five years ago, when the League of Women Voters got, uh, came up with a report and some recommendations to provide to this council body, or then that council body, for recommendations of change. But at that time, the women, the League of Women Voters sat down with Council and Kincaid to ask for his opinion, to then sat down with then-council president Darryl Buchanan to ask for their opinion, to sat down with our Senator Jim Adenek to ask for their opinion as it pushed forward, and then they came to that very podium and made their recommendations to the council body. This issue will be forced down the resident's throat, and he's gonna try to place it on the ballot at a time where we're gonna have a gubernatorial election, and then the trick will be perfected if they change things and motivate people to says that government needs to be changed, because people are hostile right now, because they have misdirected hostility. But they're really hostile about the water rates.
Yes.
They're really upset about streetlight assessments, waste collection, Genesee Towers, and all the things that's been performed upon this community. And with that Blue Ribbon Committee, I think they should pause, and I think they should operate in transparency, so the full members of our community can digest it, and actually have, have members, uh, from that, from our own community on that body. And you talk about a blended type of government. I'm, I'm gonna acquiesce, but, but what you call is a hybrid government is nothing more than a weak form of mayor government, only with different circumstances. And we've been down that road, and sometimes it works well, but if you have an emergency manager that is a city manager, he's only trying to enlist more work for his friends.
Thank you, Councilman Neely. Councilperson Galloway, do you have a question or comment?
Thank you. Um, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time. I do hope that we are able to have a special meeting, and I do appreciate all of the time that you guys spent, because you did not have to spend it. I, I do believe that because this is such a change that, and, and I personally attended two of the meetings only, I didn't attend all three of them, but there were not a lot of dialogue on what the, the actual forms of government were, because there were so many questions and so many concerns that were expressed. And I, and I remember in the meeting that I attended, that was shared in agreement, and, and the thought was, maybe we should consider another meeting or two. And so, the concern that I have is that it wasn't clear in those three meetings, and yet we want to have a community that maybe didn't experience the meetings at all, make a vote so quickly on the November ballot, without having that necessary dialogue. Now, I, I realize that the emergency manager can do whatever it is that he chooses, but it would be my suggestion that maybe this not be on the November ballot, but that, that's, that's just my opinion. I do agree with my colleagues that when you put something on a ballot, and I don't know, and, and I trust that Peter Bate is very good at what he does, and, and I trust that he would try to word the, the document on the ballot as, as well as he can, but even in the meeting, I asked, because it was shared that many of the cities use this form of government, and at that time, it was, they were unable to share what cities they actually had used in their research. And that was in the second meeting, because it was brought up at the first meeting, because I brought it up, and then at the meeting that I attended, the second meeting, the answer still was not there. It was said that it would be included in the email that we were all supposed to get, because we provided our email information, yet... to get, because we provided our email information. Yet, when I hear you today say you've actually researched or looked at 46 cities, you got to forgive me for being baffled, because if 46 cities were being used to look at this model, why wasn't it during the meetings that they couldn't even share one? Because I specifically asked what cities specifically are. And so, and so for me personally, that, that doesn't say, and I'm not saying anybody is being dishonest, but as a student in college, when I'm researching papers, and I've spent weeks upon weeks, and I've used certain cities, I know those cities, and I can name them, I can't name them all, but I can name some of them, and the fact that they weren't named at all, and then today, we're saying there was 46, just raises a little bit of caution for me. And so I just want to share.
Thank you. Counselperson.
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, you have a question?
No, and I, and I wanted to say that I think a lot of the things in here are a really good idea. I believe that we must have someone that has financial background, that has the ability to handle the finances of the city. We cannot afford to have that not handled. I mean, in our households, if we cannot financially take care, I mean, if you spend every dollar that comes in, and you don't have a backup, and so, we need somebody that knows what they're doing over our finances, and we just can't put the trusses of the finances in anybody's hands. So I believe that we need somebody that knows what they're doing in that field, no question.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselperson Galloway. Counselperson Van Buren?
Yes, there's a lot of thoughts that have gone regarding this blue ribbon. But I think overall, what I feel, and what I'm picking up from the people, is I feel this is like another exercise that the community goes through, to seem like we are doing something, but there's already something being planned behind the scenes. And we are just like puppets, either yes, people, or just hey, just bob our heads back and forth, yeah, we'll go along with it, because we're not getting the information we need. Some of the meetings that Councilwoman Galloway was referring to, were also meetings a couple of us as councilpeople were at. And you could see right from day one, this was not as it should be, if it should have the stamp of the community involved. The first meeting, and these were all held in May, the first one, May 3, at Mount Calvary, you only had about 30-some people. A number of them were members of the steering committee.
Right.
And they took, and this was a three-hour meeting, which is long enough as it is. Couple hours into sharing information that had been discussed through their meetings, and then less than an hour for the rest of us to make a yes or no decisions on certain areas, especially on the form of government. And yet, we had a lot of questions.
Right.
So there was no survey or input really done, other than, we kept strongly suggesting have additional meetings, have ways to get more people out involved, because we can't have just 30-some people making a decision for the city of Flint. And we, we kept asking, and when the next meeting came up, May 10, and this was at Mount College,
Right.
I was expecting change. No. We had about 40-some people there, again, members of the committee, basically about the same presentation. Of course, Mr. Bukowski did a good presentation on the charter background. But it was basically the same process. At the end, you were asked to vote on, okay, what type of three governments would you like, or something. By that time, your audience has decreased. I don't think people really had a true understanding, didn't know what questions to really ask. They weren't that informed that we're there. And then you had the third meeting. Sorry, I could not be there. We were in the finance process.
Right.
I would have loved to have been there, but again, you had about 40-some people. So you're talking 117 people through three public meetings, making a decision on something to affect this city forever, maybe. And, but, they have like a total of maybe 83 total attending, but when it comes down to the vote, it's a total of 64. I don't want 64 people making a decision on the direction that this city needs to go. I really, really think, there's about five people that were on the Blue Ribbon Committee, and I think of them very highly. They were very instrumental in making the master plan become this important paper now, that is a format for us to move forward. So, you know, I guess I was hoping that would be something that would also come out of the blue ribbon. We would have this very informed, impressive package, but it didn't happen. And I think because it lacked public involvement. Master plan, continuous meetings, continuous input, people from all over the city. But the blue ribbon, if you look at how many were represented from different wards, only a couple from each ward. That is not the city of Flint. That is not our people. That is not our voice. Where is our voice? And what, shouldn't we be looking at the past? I mean, we had some good things that happened in the past for this city. Right now, the present, we do have problems. But when did the problems start? If you look back around when the emergency managers were first here, they took the right from the people, they took the voice from the people, all the changes were made. Shouldn't we be working on the water, the, the people that are leaving, and how we can increase our revenue? We got problems that we need answers now, not the blue ribbon direction. Let's solve our problems. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. First, Mr. Wesley and Elizabeth Jordan, I want to thank both of you, because you both volunteer your time on the city of Flint's Planning Commission, and you did participate in the Blue Ribbon Committee, which I think, you know, I appreciate not only being here at the Planning Commission, but also being at the Blue Ribbon Committee. And I do appreciate the time that you spent there. And I understand, you know, the process. So, I want to first, first of all, I want to recognize you and thank you for that. Second of all, I believe that there are things in the charter that really need to be addressed. And I think that more importantly, out of the Blue Ribbon Committee, that should have come out of that, without trying to address each individual maybe issue in the charter that maybe needs to be put on the ballot, because I believe that should have been left up to the city council. And recommendations should have come to us. But, but that's government, and I believe in government. And we're not under normal circumstances for government. But I think the main question that the Charter Commission should have, or that the Blue Ribbon Committee should have looked at, is to determine whether or not the city of Flint should have an elected Charter Commission to review the charter and to change or make recommendations to the voters to change the charter. And I think that would have been a good start out of the Blue Ribbon Committee, because that would then tell me that the residents, number one, aren't happy with the current charter, and that they're willing to elect someone out of nine wards, to set on a Charter Commission, and to then make recommendations for the voters to decide whether or not they want a revised or a different form of government in the city of Flint. But more importantly than that, your charge, or my understanding of your charge, was to look at how government is working in Flint, what's not working, which are causing the city of Flint, not once, but twice, to go into serious financial problems. And in that report, there wasn't a recommendation to immediately put on the ballot, the position of the finance director for the city of Flint. Because the deficits lead to the information that comes from the finance department in any organization, whether it's General Motors, when they go bankrupt, or on the verge of bankruptcy, or whether it's another.